Good evening, everyone.
Evening.
Much better. Thank you. Welcome to the Mount Vernon School District Regular Board Meeting Wednesday, October 4th, 2023. If everyone could please stand for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, our nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Here.
Trustee Middleton? Trustee Jenga?
Here.
Trustee Gail?
Here.
Trustee Gail?
Here.
Trustee Lency?
Here.
Trustee White? Trustee Saunders?
Here.
V.P. Kelly?
Here.
President Kerwin?
Here.
Okay, we have a call. There is no legal requirement to recognize public comment at meetings of the Board of Education. However, the Board recognizes the critical importance of community discourse and involvement in the education of Mount Vernon's children, and accordingly, members of the public are invited to speak at each regularly scheduled board meeting, subject to terms of the board policy. Please state your name, address, and the organization, if any, you represent. A speaker must register in advance by no later than 4:00 p.m. the day of the meeting by contacting the district clerk in person at 165 North Columbus Avenue, Mount Vernon, New York, by phone at 914-665-5235, or by email. The Board welcomes all respectful comments, whether praise or criticism. However, identifying and criticizing a specific student, parent, teacher, administrator, other Mount Vernon education official, or employee is strictly prohibited. Any such complaint must be presented and addressed through the proper administrative channels. Each speaker is allowed three minutes to speak. Up to one additional minute may be used for the speaker to summarize and conclude their remarks. If appropriate, board trustees and/or the superintendent or other staff members at the direction of the superintendent may immediately respond to a speaker's remarks. Our first speaker tonight is Joseph Siyami.
Good evening to President Kerwin and the other members of the Board of Education, trustees, and all other guests. My name is Joseph Siyami. I belong to the Mount Vernon Lions. I have been a resident here on Parkway South for almost 30 years. For over three decades, Lions Clubs around the globe have been sponsoring a very special art contest in schools and youth groups. Creating peace posters gives children everywhere the chance to express their visions of peace and inspire world through art and creativity. In the last two years, the Lions Club of Mount Vernon has been trying to increase its membership to serve the people of this fair city. I am here today to seek an alignment with the art departments of those schools educating our middle-school-aged children. We are again sponsoring another peace poster contest. The 2023-2024 contest theme is Dare to Dream. To a young person, a dream isn't just a wish, hope, or desire. It's a path, a goal, and ambition. But achieving that dream takes hard work. So this year, we're asking young people to show how they'll turn their dream of a peaceful world into reality. The age group for this contest are students aged 11, 12, and 13 out of November 15, 2023. They are eligible to participate in the International Peace Poster Contest. Entries not meeting any deadlines will be disqualified. You have in front of you a manila envelope with all the information regarding the peace At this time, let me introduce Ms. Jerry Post Riley to give you some other background information.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Jerry Post Riley. I live at 115 Overlook Street for the last 30-some-odd years. And what I want to say about the Lions Club Peace Poster Contest is that it's a... in Mount Vernon, it is a partnership between the Mount Vernon Lions Club, the Mount Vernon Arts and Cultural Society, and the Mount Vernon Public Library. And this will be our second year in this partnership. What we do is we ask art teachers and art departments to encourage their students to participate, and then we gather up all of the posters, and we have a judging. And the judges are members of the partnership organizations. And then we have a exhibition at the Public Library, which lasts a month. And then during that time, we will decide who is the first, second, and third prize winners, and they will receive a monetary award. And all participants will receive a certificate of participation and thanks. And we will hopefully have some kind of a remuneration for the school or the organization where the first, and second, and third place winners are from. The last year was our first year doing this locally, and what happened is that we had a very successful contest, and we hope to do the same. And this year, we hope to include the Mount Vernon School District and hopefully get a lot of participation. It's a very fun type of an event, and it gives the students a lot to express. But we have to do this all by November 15, and then that's for the judging. After that, we will have the exhibition, and that will go on for a month. And then we have a reception where we invite the students, their parents, and the participating organizations to come and see and celebrate this type of event.
Thank you so much. We will definitely follow up with you on the organization. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Ms. Ms.
Hello, everyone. Good evening. I'm here along with other parents from Trap Hagan Elementary School, and our main concerns are the following. There appears to be a negative trend with the combination of classrooms at Trap Hagan. Trap Hagan has lost a second-grade teacher, a seventh-grade teacher, and a eighth-grade teacher, resulting in the combination of classrooms with approximately 35 students. This runs the risk of negatively impacting student learnings. Students are already suffering from COVID loss. Grade teachers like Ms. Lanton, Ms. Grandieris, Ms. Murray, and Mr. Devanzo should be sought to teach students. These are teachers that figure out what each student needs and partner with parents to ensure that the student learning is successful. Students may lack focus. This is not a behavior issue or a child interrupting the classroom. That child may be steering out the classroom, playing with their clothes in, and needs redirection with regards to learning. The slave teacher that was hired in place at Parker Elementary by the school board in 2019 is not desired. Teacher shortage. We acknowledge that there is a teacher shortage, but what is the Board doing about this? Has it reached out to retired teachers to see if anyone wants to come back out of retirement to teach? Has it partnered with CUNY, SUNY, Sarah Lawrence, and other colleges that have teaching programs and graduate teachers? Or partner with programs where adults switch careers into teaching? Those are just some ideas. Parents are asking for expeditious and emergency review of good grade teachers, in particular for the second grade, because this is their foundation. We want to build on the first-grade teachers that we had. As well as emergency board approval of selected candidates. We do know that the Board can drag their feet. Parental update of the hiring process on a biweekly or monthly basis would be appreciated. We acknowledge the meeting with Ms. Smith on Monday, and we thank you for the feedback that you provided, but we want this to continue. We don't want this to be a drop in the bucket. We don't want that Monday meeting to be circumventing this public conversation. We want the public to be aware that we're looking for great teachers, that we acknowledge the teacher shortage. We need teachers. We need teachers' assistants. We need reading teachers. Those are all lacking at Trap Hagan. They have one teacher. I know I came at the board meeting to complain because I felt that my son was being sacrificed at a red level when he had moved from the red to the yellow level for other students to be placed in the AIS reading program. Which brings me to that next. After-school learning instruction, AIS, what is the actual start date for that? Is this extra help being offered to all students at all schools? Or does a student have to test into red to get extra help? What if a parent feels from working with their child that that student needs extra help? Are they not then going to be permitted to go into that? My older child, when he went to Trap Hagan, we had him at AIS when he was an 87/90 because we wanted him, when he tested, to be at the next level. It doesn't have to be that a child is failing for them to get that extra help or be placed in a program. They can always benefit from something. The bulk of the Trap Hagan parents, they give their kids extra work. They partner with the teachers. They speak to the teachers on a daily basis. And at home, with their homework, they're giving them extra work because they're trying to prepare them for the next level. Those are the type of parents that the teachers will have to deal with. They may consider us overbearing, but we just figure that we're doing our jobs as Other items. Parker Elementary. As I mentioned to you guys, I straggled both sides, the south and the north side. I know with the prior administration, Bennet Conroy, I was told that the playground was going to be fixed. I wanted to know if that's still ongoing. Physical ed helps with mental wellness. And then the last piece. City Hall acknowledged to homeowners in the email that they owe the school board. The school board needs to agree with City Hall on a payment plan. When are they going to pay the school board? So that then you guys can have funding to help with teachers, teachers and assistant reading teachers, the after-school programs.
Ms. Robinson?
I'm going to finalize my last two.
Yeah, please.
As homeowners, we pay $13,000 to $20,000 in taxes. Those taxes reflect Long Island and Scarsdale School District. If we're going to get mediocre education, we should be paying mediocre taxes.
Ms. Grant Alvaranga?
So I just want to remind everyone to refrain from calling names. Identify individuals by name, please. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. And I want to acknowledge where Ms. Keisha, she left off earlier. I am also a parent that's impacted by the second-grade teacher exit at Trap Hagan, and I want to express my thanks to Dr. Smith for having that meeting as well. But as she said, we are paying twice, well, more than double the taxes that the city paid. And what's frustrating is that with this situation that we have right now, it's been stated how many kids are in the classroom in the city. Now, if we're going to use a city as a model to say this many kids are in the classroom, then we should be paying the same amount of taxes that a city is paying. And when we do pay the same amount of taxes, then parents like myself, who wants a smaller classroom, can have the option to afford to put my kid in a private school or do other alternative options that will work for us. Now, I'm not... I'm sure as an educator, many educators here are aware that the city changed a law as of last year where, effective within the next five years, it started September, that there is actually a class size limit. So for grades kindergarten through fourth grade, it's 20 students. And for grades seven through... let's see. It's seven through eight, which is middle school, it's actually 25 students. And no maximum more than 25 for high school. So obviously, that's class size of over 35, because I believe right now the second grade is combined to 35 students. It does not work. So normally, the city, the trend is the city, this law takes effect for the city. It has to be in place within the next five years, starting this year. So I'm sure Westchester County, the remaining portions of the New York State will also have to recognize that law and abide by it. So why are we doing the opposite? I know and I understand there is a shortage, and I also understand that there are parents who are choosing to take their kids out of school, so their enrollment is down. And there may be a need to combine classes like the seventh and the eighth grade that were combined, but it also needs to make sense. It should not be exceeding a limit where kids are at, they're not getting the attention they need, else impact their learning. They are our future, and especially the second grade where their learning is so important at this stage, there is no reason why there should be 35 kids in the class, because they cannot, one teacher, no matter how good that teacher is, cannot focus on all those kids within the hours that they're there. So I'm asking this board, what else is being considered, knowing that the city is not a model for their current enrollment rate, and knowing that they already showed that studies have proven that it does not work? We should not be going in the opposite direction. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Glendon Arain?
Good evening, everyone. My name is Glendon Arain, and just thank you for allowing me time to speak on behalf of the students at Trap Hagan. I am a parent of three children, all of whom attend Trap Hagan. I'm also a member of the school's PTA. Two of my three children are negatively impacted by the staffing shortage at Trap Hagan. Because of the abrupt resignation of our daughter's second-grade teacher last week, as you've heard, the entire second grade is now combined into one classroom. Similarly, last week, Trap Hagan students and parents were informed that the seventh and eighth-grade science teacher is being pulled to teach at another school. As a result of this, every single seventh and eighth grade is impacted because their classes are being combined, not just for science, but for other subjects as well. These students are all losing the benefit of individualized, small-classroom instruction, which is much needed to thrive and learn. From a practical standpoint, there's close to 30 students in the combined seventh-grade class. I'm not sure if any members here have seen the classrooms at Trap Hagan, but given the physical size of the rooms, it's nearly impossible to fit 30 students into one room comfortably while cultivating an environment of creativity, exploration, and growth. As we all know, when teachers are responsible for a large number of students in one classroom, the quality and effectiveness of teaching can suffer. Realistically, they don't have enough time to provide the individual support that students need. Although the teachers at Trap Hagan are exceptional, at the bare minimum, they need adequate staffing and to be in a physical space that supports learning, one in which students can sit comfortably, where they have functional whiteboards that don't stop working in the middle of a lesson, and even air conditioners in every room where everyone is comfortable, not just some students, not just some staff members. All of these were observed at the meet-and-greet two weeks ago. Trap Hagan is now rated on Great Schools as a seven out of 10, higher than many schools in Westchester. Whether or not we agree with the Great Schools methodology and its rating, it is a very visible measure of performance. Part of the reason I think we've been successful at Trap Hagan over the past years is due to our small class sizes, where teachers are able to give individual students the time and attention they deserve. If we combine classes long-term and make this our standard, the quality of education and student progress will undoubtedly suffer. And therefore, we're urgently requesting that the Board make filling the second-grade vacancy a priority with a teacher who's competent, dedicated, and passionate. We're also requesting that you reinstate our middle-school science teacher full-time. Otherwise, the work and effort of past administrations to keep seventh and eighth-grade students in the same building is diminished. Lastly, we're requesting implementation of measures to improve our facilities by putting air conditioners in every classroom so that all are comfortable, not just some, and by updating the technology in rooms wherever needed. Thank you for your time and attention to this matter.
Mark Stuckey? Mark Stuckey?
Good evening, Trap Hagan family. I didn't even know you guys were going to be here, but it's not the teachers that's the problem, it's the administration. Good evening, Acting Superintendent, Board members, and community. My name is Erica Peterson, and I reside at 531 East Lincoln Avenue. First, I'd like to speak as a concerned taxpayer and asking for follow-up about when our regular superintendent will be reassigned back to work. The board members back in February of this year then did quite an animated job at advertising that the reassignment was due to grant money, yet the Board President announced in the September 5, 2023, meeting that, and I quote, "The district is going to now start monitoring grant monies." I don't even want to know what was going on before September 5. You rushed to push out the Serenian report and then discreetly brushed that implosion under the rug, and now you've been using our tax money since February to pay for not one, but two superintendents. Yet not once have you given the public an update on what is going on, but have zero problem using our money, with your money also, because you are all residents of Mount Vernon as well. With understanding that surely many things are confidential, which I totally get, but the Board at least owes the taxpayers some type of update, especially since this district has had over 100 resignations of faculty and staff since the decision of reassigning her back on February 13. As a sped parent, I am immensely concerned about our students who are dyslexic. We have some absolutely fabulous special education educators and speech therapists, yet unfortunately, most are not certified in the highly popular and very successful Lyndon Moot Bell Method and Orton Gillingham Method of teaching our students with dyslexia. I was told there are about three persons in this district who are certified in those. Our students with dyslexia are falling through the cracks, and this needs to be addressed immediately. We can't keep pushing students through this district, knowing we do not offer the right tools to make them successful learners. I also noticed, looking at some of the board docs, that the school security officers are no longer being called officers, and now school monitors. I want... if someone could please explain to the public what the difference is. Does this title change have anything to do with what little they get paid? These are the men and women who, as parents, rely on to protect and keep our children safe, but if they're being hired as stepmen at $29,000 a year, we are relying on amazing people who are only getting paid $29,000 to $40,000 a year to protect our children. Is there any way that their salary levels can be increased in some way? As the PTSA president of Mount Vernon High School, there's some good stuff in this. Don't worry. Where every single student is represented, I recently learned that our life skills students, who many have autism and are not offered an art or music class. I'm sure we all know how beneficial it would be for our life skills students to have classes like these. They are proven benefits for cognition and fine motor skill improvement. Our life skills students are some of the most vulnerable students and most amazing, might I add. And I believe that they should be given the opportunity to participate in an art or music class. And thank you for getting started on our girls locker room. I appreciate that. I'm sorry Mr. Keller's not here tonight, but I would like to say from the proud Native American families like mine here in this school district, the Nodaway Indian Tribe of Virginia, of which my children and I are citizens of, thank you, Board, for continuing to acknowledge Indigenous Day instead of Columbus Day. We appreciate it, and we thank you.
Thank you. That ends public comments. Good evening, everyone. I would like to thank Dr. Gabitan for covering for me during the last board meeting. She did an amazing job, and I truly appreciate it. For my superintendent's report, we're going to have a presentation, the Mount Vernon City School District K-8 Literacy Rollout Plan, and Dr. Doggett will introduce our speakers.
Good evening, everyone. At the September 5 board meeting, I gave a brief introduction of the literacy rollout plan that we were doing, but it was incorporated in how we were making learning fun. So tonight, we have Mary Beth Rose, the Director of Humanities, and we have Dr. Crystal Waterman, the Principal of Edward Williams School, and they're going to discuss our K-8 literacy rollout plan. In this plan, we have components of balanced literacy, the science of reading, structured literacy, and best instructional practices to provide customized reading instruction for all of our learners. This presentation will show what our literacy rollout looks like, why we are doing it, and how we plan to take students from reading words and making meetings. So without further ado, Mary Beth Rose and Crystal Waterman.
Good evening, Board President Kerwin, trustees, Dr. Smith, cabinet members, community members, and guests. Thank you for the opportunity to speak about our K-8 literacy program. I would like to take a moment and acknowledge that our literacy rollout has been made possible by individuals who work within our district, a group of teachers and administrators who are dedicated to ensuring that our students have the very best individualized and robust type of literacy instruction. So their names are there this evening, again, our administrators and teachers. I would like to start with the why. Why is literacy instruction so important? And as Dr. Doggett opened this evening, he mentioned that our literacy rollout encompasses balanced literacy, structured literacy, and the science of reading. We know that in order for students to be successful, they need to have a strong foundation in phonics, phonemic awareness, and the ability to decode. Therefore, we set out to develop a literacy rollout that encompasses that strong foundation but helps our students achieve reading comprehension success as well. There's a lot of buzzwords around literacy instruction, and I've already said them twice this evening. So I'm going to tell you a little bit more about each one of those and why we have decided to take from each one of them. So balanced literacy. That encompasses a read aloud, shared reading, guided reading, independent reading, and word study. You might know it from Reader's Workshop and Writer's Workshop. Then we have structured literacy. That's a systematic approach to teaching students how to decode and how to spell. And then lastly, the science of reading, which encompasses phonics, phonemic awareness, fluency, vocabulary, and reading comprehension. It is imperative that for a literacy program to be successful, or a literacy approach to be successful, we have to pull from each one of these, as we know that one form of instruction does not meet the needs of all of our learners. Therefore, the work that this committee has been doing is really important and vital, as we've taken the time to look at each one of these approaches and develop what's best here for our students in Mount Vernon.
So continuing with our why, we took a moment to pull the end-of-year eye-ready data for the entire district. If you notice, the first top line, and for those of you who are in the audience who may not be able to see it, that long green line at the top speaks to how well our students are using phonetic skills and phonics, phonemic awareness and skills. So that's how they're able to actually read words. The next two, the... going to the third long green line, those are high-frequency words. So those are words that children commonly see when they're reading, and how well they can just sort of look at them and know what they say. Some of those words are not... we're not able to sound them out. They just have to know them. The next line there, as you see, we start seeing a little bit more yellow and red. That line is for vocabulary. Again, this is district-wide. And the bottom three lines speaks to the comprehension of the students in our district. And so, as you can see... And so, as you can see, the areas of informational text and literature, children being able to comprehend that is an area where we need additional focus. And so, going back to the need for, uh, pulling from these different approaches, our children, in order for them to increase their comprehension, they have to do what? Spend more time reading. They have to read. Just decoding words and putting them back together is not enough. Now we have to help them make meaning of those words. But we wanted to share this with you because we wanted to emphasize that those primary grade skills of phonetic ability is heavily taught in the district, so they have a really good grasp of that. So I have a question. What do we think are some of the components of a good literacy program? And you can give me a thumbs up, you can give me, we would do with the children, you can give us a thumbs up or whatever. Do you believe that children should have time in small group instruction with their teachers? Yes or no? Do you believe children should have time to read independently, just practice reading by themselves and enjoy it? Do you believe children should have an opportunity to hear their teacher reading a story to them and just enjoying the story and asking questions and wondering? And finally, no, not finally, I have two more. Do you believe that children should have an opportunity to not only hear their children read, but as they're reading then, also follow along and hear the fluency in their teacher's voice? And finally, do you believe that word study should be part of, in other words, vocabulary, phonics, prefixes, suffixes, should that also be included in reading instruction? There's no argument that we all believe that those components need to be a part of literacy instruction, and so that is what we have been working on throughout the summer and continue to work on as we move forward. So I'm just going to break down each of those just a little bit, because the data has told us that this is what we need to do. So due to the data in our independent reading opportunities, we'll now be exposing our scholars to more time to read both fiction and nonfiction texts, and you can read through those at a later time. We'll also be providing guided reading, which is our small group instructional time. So the teachers right now are assessing all of our scholars. After they finish the assessment, they're going to create small groups based on the needs of each of those children, and they will meet with them in groups of four to five children and provide direct, explicit instruction in order for the children to improve their ability to read. That is our guided reading. Shared reading is also a component that we will be adding to our literacy rollout. And so in shared reading now, the children have text in front of them, and while the teacher is reading or a classmate is reading, they have the opportunity to follow along and listen to the habits of a fluent reader who's not only reading to decode words, but also reading to understand or reading to learn. We also have built-in read aloud, starting from our littlest learners. Our littlest, our smallest scholars can read picture books, and they begin to create stories of what they believe is happening when they're just looking at the pictures. And then from that, we begin to introduce them to words and, and to the language and put that into text. And finally, our literacy, uh, approach includes all of these, all of, although not exhaustive, uh, of word study. So that's where we're getting our phonological awareness, our phonemic awareness, our spelling and spelling patterns, prefixes, suffixes, vocabulary, word-solving strategies, and word origin. And so our literacy plan is not a program that we published from a company, because those, oftentimes, those published, um, those publishers create something for anywhere in the nation, and it's not necessarily the needs of the specific children in a community with our demographic. And so our literacy program is combining the component, components of a balanced approach, the science of reading, structured literacy, and best instructional practices to provide a customized reading instructional program for each child based on their individual data.
So Dr. Waterman just outlined what a robust literacy, um, rollout looks like. Just to give you a little background information, we looked at what worked and what didn't work last year and developed our committee, as I mentioned earlier in the presentation, a committee of teachers and administrators. We have to be reflective in our practice, so we had to acknowledge what didn't work so that we could move forward. From the committee, we created grade band teams, which set out to create the, the units of study for the teachers, encompassing all of the elements that Dr. Waterman just spoke The Reader's Workshop includes a mini lesson, independent reading, guided reading, and the share-out, where students have the opportunity to share what they are learning within the classroom. This is a vital part of the instruction as it is structured, and that's the key here. This is a structured form of how to teach a literacy lesson. The Writer's Workshop includes the mini lesson, the writing portion, where students are writing for a sustained amount of time on a given topic. They have the opportunity to confer with their teachers, one-on-one or within a small group, and then they have the opportunity to share. The sharing part is really crucial in the Writer's Workshop. This is where students can see themselves and hear themselves as writers. What we have here for you is a sample sixth grade lesson. So these materials were shared with our teachers. I'm just going to read the teaching point to you. This is a grade six lesson. This is part of the launch that the teachers are wrapping up, um, this week. So the teaching point, strong readers are active readers. Strong readers are able to find the gist of a text and paraphrase ideas as they read. So that teaching point is what the teacher will be going over during the modeling portion of the lesson, and then the students will have the opportunity to practice that, finding the gist, so reading through an entire passage or an entire story and being able to summarize the information. The next sample we have for you is a first grade lesson, and this was day four of the launch. Again, the teachers are wrapping this up. The teaching point for grade one is everyone has a role in the workshop. So when we think about our youngest learners in the district and encouraging them to want to read, to want to write, we need them to feel like they're valuable members of the workshop model, and this is like the process, the routines, how they behave in the classroom when it comes to literacy instruction, how to pick out a book, how to work with a partner, all of that is part of the launch for the first grade and for our youngest learners. You've heard a lot about foundations, I'm sure, since last year. We are now in year two of our implementation, and this is a big part of our literacy rollout. We shared with you earlier that we need great games and phonics and phonemic awareness, and that is directly connected to our work with foundations, the teachers having the resources to teach lessons that are geared towards phonics and phonemic awareness. This year, with your support, we were able to add the Scholastic leveled libraries in addition to the leveled bookrooms that we received last year. So this year, we purchased great genres, including females in STEM, culturally responsive titles, as well as rising voices. It is vital that students are exposed to a variety of texts, variety of genres, and a variety of authors. We also have Literacy Pro, which is our online component to Scholastic. There are over 3,000 eBooks available to students. 300 of those are in Spanish, and about a third of them come with the audio, so this way, all learners are included.
And as we're wrapping up, assessment is an important component of our literacy rollout, because we need to ensure that our instruction is being impactful and being intentional, and that the data shows us that we're not just teaching, but the children are also learning. And we're using these different, uh, types of assessment according to the needs of each learner. So here are some of the things that we're doing. Right now, our teachers are engaging our students in their beginning-of-the-year eye-ready assessment, they're wrapping that up. The teachers are conducting, running records, which means that they're sitting and listening to each child read, and they are, uh, creating a diagnostic plan for each child based on how they're reading to them. There, we'll also be having conder, uh, common assessments, uh, rather, according to the standards, using a tool that we have called Data Warehouse. We also have teachers still have the creativity and flexibility to create assessments for their classroom, as well as them, uh, using writing portfolios for our students. So what are our next steps? We're continuing to provide the teachers with support with the lessons. We're actually just wrapping up writing the first unit that will go out to the teachers this week, and they'll begin to utilize that starting next week. We will continue to utilize the eye-rated, eye-ready data, assessment data, as well as the New York State Assessment Data that we now have from last year, and will be assisting our teachers with creating small groups of instruction for students to increase their literacy outcomes. And we will also be providing professional development from people right here in-house that we have, as well as, um, any vendors that we, that the district may decide to move with. And so as we come to our end, based on the knowledge that we have of our students, us creating a customized program, we believe, was the best approach, as opposed to using a public, a published program this year, where our teachers would just read from a script and not you being intentional with the instruction with their students. It'll provide a more robust learning experience for our children, and teachers will be able to spend time planning around the needs of their children. Thank you.
Thank you so very much. My question to you, uh, do you remember what we're doing this year? We're going where?
Back to basics.
Back to basics. And, and we are focusing on what?
Reading, arithmetic, and writing.
And you included all of that in your presentation, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
I thank you so very much.
You're welcome.
The second report this evening will be by Ken Silva. He's going to discuss the 2020 bond.
Good evening, everyone. Tonight, we're going to go through the bond from 2016, which was repurposed in 2017 and completed a number of years later. We're going to start by going through building by building, what things looked like before and what they look like now, and there are several board members who were on the board at that time. Uh, Wanda White and Adrian Saunders were on the board at the time that we began this, this 2020 vision. So this is part of what Graham looked like in the beginning. Altogether, we spent almost $7 million on Graham. You can see the things that we did, new fields and playground, new main entrance. It always wanted that entrance that we did, security upgrades, playground. This is what the front of the building now looks like as compared to what it looked like before. It's just stunning what, what happened there. This was the, um, this was the playground before, and this is a time-lapse photography of doing the playground at Graham. We're compressing a year into 30 seconds. So we did the playground, soccer field, it's just, um, beautiful site work. Included in this, we also had a million-dollar grant, uh, to help with the site work. This is part of Graham before. This is Graham, new entrance lobby and security. Nice, get one there. This is a new science lab. These are the hallways. We're moving on to Leadership Academy. This is what some of the building looked like earlier, before we did it. This was what the auditorium and the ceilings looked like. This is what it looked like afterwards. We spent 1.3 million dollars on the auditorium and science lab, and that's all that was done out of the bond in this particular building. Another view of the auditorium redone. Another view of the science labs at Williams School. This was the auditorium before we redid it. We spent 2.5 million there on science labs and the auditorium and related HVAC work in the building. This is the Williams Auditorium when it was finished. We also had, you can see on the right, there was some artwork that we preserved. We had to cover it and then restore it so that it remained there. At Lincoln School, this is what it looked like before. We spent $800,000 there in that building, mostly for science labs in that building. This is what Honor Academy or Homes looked like before. This is what it looked like after we built the science lab there. At Parker School, this is what Parker looked like before. This is the new science lab there and pre-K classroom. At Denzel Washington, this was the gym of the auditorium, which was constructed during the Great Depression in 1929, and there's some artwork on the balcony that was restored as well. This is what the auditorium looks like now, another view of the auditorium. This is other parts of the building, where we did roofwork. This is beforehand, this is the, after the renovation of the library. This is what the parking area looked like at Denzel Washington before, here's what it looks like now. This is the dance studio. Experimental theater. We spent 21.2 million dollars at Denzel Washington. Building-wide interior repairs, roof repairs, exterior additions, sidewalk improvements. At Pennington School, we're going to see another time lapse of the construction of the renovation of the building. We spent 19.8 million dollars in Pennington, with the two-story addition, science labs, new cafeteria, library, other renovations. This is also Pennington. Pennington. At the Steam Academy, this is what it looked like outside when we first started in 2016. This is what it looks like now. This was part of the Steam Academy before. We did major renovations there, including the roof. This is what the building looks like now. We spent 13.3 million dollars in that building. At Mount Vernon High School, this is what the fields looked like before. This is what the fields, or part of the fields look like now, with our beautiful eight-lane running track. And many of you may not know, but we have a mile-long walking path that circles the perimeter of the, of the property, that, um, very few people use, but it's there. This was the plan for the athletic fields back in 2016, 17. Our new tennis courts, we spent 6.3 million dollars on that building. At Trapegen, we did science labs. Then we did IT and security projects district-wide, just a picture of a IT closet. At Mandela, Mandela was a gut renovation. When we first started out, Mandela was not even a part of the bond. It was, uh, it was going to be abandoned, not used again, and then in 2017, the board and then the public voted to repurpose the bond to redo the building entirely. This is what part of the inside of the building looked like. You're going to see the ages of these buildings in just a moment. This is part of what Mandela looked like. Again, this was the plan. We spent 22 point, 23 million dollars. Remember, this was not part of the original bond, but money was repurposed with a decision by the board and then the public approving it in 2017 to change the direction of the bond, and I believe part of this was because we anticipated growth in students because of growth in, in constructing. growth in, in construction of apartment buildings in the area where Mandela is. This is part of the renovation. Again. Again. This was the gym. We had to put in a whole new stair tower because the fire escape was not usable. We had to replace it with a new way of getting it out of the building. This is more work. This is the playground. At Grimes, we originally started out to put a, another floor on the building above the second floor of the building. And then that was scrapped when we redid the bond in 2017. So this is just talking about the annex building. The annex building is about to be demolished. We've accepted, the board has accepted the bids and the construction, the demolition is about to start. They're still working on the preparation to protect everybody from the asbestos that's a part of the demolition of the building. This will come out of the bond and there's a million dollars set aside for this from the bond. So in terms of the finances, at that time in 2015, when we did the building condition survey, it was determined we had 170 million dollars in need in building repairs. And those bill, repairs are all listed there. Notice Mandela's from 1908. Look at the building, the ages of the buildings. You see Graham schools before 1900. You know, this school district began in 1894. 1897 was when Graham was built. So then the board and the public changed what we were doing. We had originally had 49 million dollars in repairs. That was, for the most part, disappeared. And we added to the work at Denzel Washington. We added to the work at Pennington and we put Mandela back into the budget. So 121 million dollars in all was, of repairs were postponed to do other things instead. So this was the original bond vote. You really can't see it, but this is the way it was planned originally. You could see, if you could see money for the fields in each of the buildings and other things in brief of what was going to be done. Then this is the repurposed bond. This is going to be two pages. Repurposed bond from 2017. This is what we actually did and actually spent. And I'll take a second here and tell you that all of our paperwork is finished. We are getting state aid on every one of these projects. And so you know that the state aid right now on building repairs, if we were to do anything more, if we were to do any projects, it's, it's 76, 73% is our building aid right now, which means if we spend a hundred dollars, it only costs us 26 dollars to do a hundred dollars worth of work in our buildings. So this is what we ended up doing at Mandela, Penning. These six buildings got 84% of the bond. And remember again, the public voted on this in 2017 to repurpose the bond. So you can see the money for Mandela in there, the addition to Pennington and other areas. So that was 90 million dollars, those six buildings. And the, the rest of what was spent, up to 104 million dollars, was done in these other The total we spent was 104,310 dollars, 310,000 dollars. So there's 4 million dollars left over. We know a million dollars is going to go for the demolition at, at Grimes. That leaves 3 million dollars. We are hoping to pay for the Trapphegan air conditioning and the oil tank removal out of those funds that are left over, but we can't spend that money until we complete some law, a lawsuit that we have having to do with the, with a delay in the construction of the buildings. So there's, there's 3 million dollars. We need about 1.2 for the two projects I just mentioned, the Trapphegan air conditioning and the oil tank removal. In the meantime, we are going to use general fund money to cover those expenses, although we're not doing the Trapphegan air conditioning until the next budget year, '24, '25 budget. It will be in that budget. But we expect them both to be paid for out of the bond. This is something I thought I would show you because there was a lot of discussion during the bond work having to do with change orders. The industry standard for change orders is about 10%. You can see there that 17 projects had no change orders or credits. 13 projects had 2 to 8% in change orders and only four projects were above 8%. So we think overall, we did very well with change orders. More than happy to provide this, anybody would like to see it. And I think that's going to be it. And I'll take any questions if you'd like.
Couple of questions. I didn't see the number for Parker. What was spent at Parker? Did it flash up and I just missed it?
Yes, I'll, I'll back up a second, see if I can get to it. Wait, I should get it right there.
And Rebecca Turner, by the way.
When I, when I get that for you later, Mr. Mitchell.
We can't show it here?
Well, I, I guess I can back up here. I did. So these, these were not the actual expenditure. I need to...
These are not the actuals, right?
These are not. This slide is not. So Parker, 1.5 million was spent. Those are actual, actual numbers.
And Rebecca Turner had nothing?
That's correct.
So the infrastructure was postponed?
The, the repairs at Rebecca Turner were postponed. That's correct. Nothing was spent there from the bond.
Okay. So I'll, I'll just speak to Mandela for, just for one thing, because it was a huge undertaking and we spent a lot of money to, you know, to do the repair, to remodel the entire building. If you were to look at all of the money that was spent in the 2016 bond to do most of these large projects, how many of these buildings are right now in need of repair on some of those things that we just paid all these millions of dollars for? I know Mandela is one of them because I've toured the building. The gymnasium floor at one point, not now, just in the last two years, the gymnasium floor was already starting to buckle up. Kids are catching their clothes on, nails coming out of the floor. What would you say is your, an idea as to how much repairs are we looking at already from the bond money that was just spent?
Repairs of those items?
Yes.
I can't speak to that. We know what we need to do. We have an itemized list and you, all the board members have received that of what the, the next, the next projects could look like and what we need to do for, for major repairs. But I'm not able to say to you what has deteriorated over time.
I'm, I guess I'm just, all right, that's fine. Another question, of course, is you, you mentioned we're getting air conditioning at Trapphegan, which is amazing to hear. How many other buildings in our district have any type of air conditioning?
Let me speak to Trapphegan first. We've been trying to do this air conditioning major project, which is about 800,000 dollars for a number of years, probably seven years. So this summer, I believe we put in 17 air conditioners in the building. That at this moment is the capacity that that building can have. I did hear the parent earlier speak to having to do with the air conditioning. We can put more in, but we would have to do an electrical upgrade in the building to do that. We already know and the board has been told that we will not have the chiller and the air conditioning done for this summer. This coming summer, it will not be done, this big project. So our plan would be to, to get more air conditioners into that building as well as other buildings, although that building has more air conditioners, window units than any, any other building. But, but it needs more to be able to operate properly because that building was built to be air conditioned, not to have the windows open.
So yeah, I appreciate that. The question really was, how many other buildings in our district have absolutely no air conditioning whatsoever? In other words, meaning no units in the windows. And I'm not talking about the ones that the teachers have gone out and purchased with their own money. I'm not talking about that. How much buildings in our district that don't have any type of...
I'm not aware of any building that doesn't have some air conditioning as of last summer.
Of course, I'm talking in the educational space, not...
That's what I'm speaking of, too.
And not in the offices?
We, we, in the spring, we went to every building principal and we asked them for a list of the building, the room numbers they needed for the summer when the, when the heating, when we needed cooling. And we provided every building with exactly what was requested by the building principals. We had to do some electrical upgrades, but we did provide it at that time. So there was no building without something.
Thank you. That's all I have.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Silva. And that ends the superintendent's report.
Okay, thank you so much. Now we will get into community reports. The school district has two employees that we were appointed, that were appointed to the Cable Commission Board at the city. That we appointed Mike Thompson and Carlos Ramirez to that board. Tonight, we are going to get a, a report from Mike Thompson as it pertains to the commission, the Cable Commission Board. Mike, if you could just please tell us... Thank you.
I guess I gotta record myself. Good evening, board. Madam President, Agnes Superintendent, Dr. Kim. Yeah, so for C-TAC, for those who don't know, it's a cable commission, it's an advisory board. So we're not there to make any laws, any rule changes necessary, other than to the charter that runs the actual governing body, which is C-TAC. It's an advisory committee. We're trying to work along with the mayor as well as Dr. Smith. She's been, kept abreast of what's going on, if there's any changes, any updates. Right now, we're still in the preliminary stages of gathering facts and how to attack the review of our Chapter 12 guidelines. We have been reaching out to other municipalities as we would like to try to be, we want cable brought back in digitized age. It's 2023 and it's been a long time coming that Mount Vernon residents deserve to have the same service that some of the other municipalities around have. So that's something that we're looking to put together. We've already visited White Plains in their studio and we have a lot of the same similarities, believe it or not. So we're not too far behind, but we do have a lot of things. We're doing gathering of facts, if you will, and trying to see, make sure that the franchisees that operate in our city, that provide service to this, many subscribers across Mount Vernon and that they're paying their fair share. They're collecting fees from your bills. So residents, check your bills. It's called PEG grant, PEG grant fees or PENT, some kind of tax that has PEG attached to it, which is Public Education and Government. We have Channel 6 and Channel 18 that runs through Spectrum. That channel's also broadcasted to Channel 18 and Channel 30. I'm sorry, Channel 30 and Channel 33 on Verizon. So right now, our main franchises that run service would be Spectrum and Verizon. My understanding now, as the vice chair of C-TAC, is that we do have other providers here. So we're trying to see which way to, you know, work with these groups. We're not attacking anybody. We just want to make sure that the money is going in the right direction. That PEG grant money is very important to the city. It's very important to the district. Right now, we're the ones that are in control of broadcasting from Room 116 at Mount Vernon High School. At our TV studio, we do broadcast these channels to the public and these, all, the whole system is very antiquated. Right now, we're nowhere near digital, all analog system. If you ever turn on your TV and you check out public access, it looks kind of fuzzy. Verizon doesn't look as bad, but we are working very diligently on this. And we actually have a meeting at City Hall tomorrow at 6:30 PM. You can join via Zoom. And it's also broadcast at the CMVNY Facebook page. So if you want to join us for the meeting, that would be great. Any other questions, feel free, you know, probably after that we have that meeting, we'll probably be more clarification. Yes, sir.
One question. What, you mentioned that the, the equipment is antiquated in Room 106. Where do the, would the funds come from that PEG money to bring that equipment into the new, the new world?
Correct. The district should not be taking on, it's been written in, well over, digging a paper from well over 12 years ago, that there is some guidelines there that the franchisees who operate in this city are supposed to be helping out and partnering with the city as well as the school district, as long as we're the ones who are broadcasting from that building. We're supposed to be receiving monies to keep the system updated, up to 2020, now 2023 standards.
So is that the provider not cutting the district the check? Or is that the city not giving us the money that the provider has collected? What is it?
This right now, it seems to be the franchisees. That's who we need to be talking to.
The provider?
Yes. And there's many of them. I, right now, I found a list, there's somewhere up around seven or eight that are, have subscribers throughout our city and they have this on their bills. They're taxing everybody. They're taking this money from your bill and they're putting it aside and we have gotten out of dime. Last tracked anything we received was somewhere around 2007. Yes, sir.
So if it's in there, is it in a account that's held in trust? How is it collected? How is it held? How is it dispersed? Like...
That's what we don't know. The only thing, we reached out to the comptroller, Dr. Darren Morton, and tried to see if, what kind of, how much did they collect over the years between the city? Because there's a city, there's a franchise agreement that goes right to the city. They get their cut, they do whatever with that money. But then there's a PEG grant portion that goes to the district, who is the key holder of the broadcast equipment and all the cameras and things like that that need to be kept up.
So who in the district would have been responsible for following that or receiving that funding?
Receiving that funding, it would have come through right here, Board of Ed.
So we should have been collecting that type of...
Previous superintendents should have been on top of that. Don't want to throw anybody under the bus.
No, we're trying to understand. We understand you're doing yeoman's work to get this back.
Yes, ma'am.
But we'd like to also understand how it's, the money is collected. I mean, the, the providers are collecting it. Is it being held in a account for the district? They've collected it, so that's what I'm trying to understand. Do, do you have any idea of...
That's what we're trying to get to the bottom of. And, and right now, we're working closely with City Hall and we have our leadership over there, attorney over there, and they're working, they're jumping all over this now. It's, it's serious money that we're missing. And we're missing the opportunities to, to bring these resources back to the district. You know, we want to be able to broadcast things on TV. Like right now, this is not going out to Channel 6. This is going out to Facebook, you know, and, and that's kind of ridiculous. People who don't have those avenues, they need them, especially our elderly folks, people who can maybe can't afford, you know, cable. Not everybody can assume to get that. So, but local access is the way to go. And especially, we just had a flood. There should have been a message going out on Channel 6 about that. Can't even see Channel 6. So it's a big problem right now. We got to get on top of that.
Thank you, Mike.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Appreciate it.
And if you could share the link for the Zoom to the district clerks, the lead, we need to get it out. Thank you. Thank you again. So I'm gonna go to my left, Trustee Lindsay.
No reports. I don't have a meeting yet.
Okay. Trustee Mitchell?
Couple of things. Bringing back the renaming ceremonies for the Honor Academy and Leadership Academy, we're trying to move forward with that. It never happened after we changed the names. And I know it might seem like why we, why, how, why it takes so long, but we're still moving forward with it.
That was 90 million dollars. That was 90 million dollars, those six buildings. And the, the rest of what was spent, up to 104 million dollars, was done in these other The total we spent was 104,310 dollars, 310,000 dollars. So there's 4 million dollars left over. We know a million dollars is going to go for the demolition at, at Grimes. That leaves 3 million dollars. We are hoping to pay for the Trapphegan air conditioning and the oil tank removal out of those funds that are left over, but we can't spend that money until we complete... But we can't spend that money until we complete some lawsuit that we have, having to do with a delay in the construction of the buildings. So there's $3 million. We need about 1.2 for the two projects I just mentioned, the Trappagant air conditioning and the oil tank removal. In the meantime, we are going to use general fund money to cover those expenses, although we're not doing the Trappagant air conditioning until the next budget year, 24, 25 budget. It will be in that budget. But we expect them both to be paid for out of the bond. This is something I thought I would show you because there was a lot of discussion during the bond work having to do with change orders. The industry standard for change orders is about 10%. You can see there that 17 projects had no change orders or credits. 13 projects had 2% to 8% in change orders, and only four projects were above 8%. So we think overall, we did very well with change orders. More than happy to provide this, anybody would like to see it. And I think that's going to be it. And I'll take any questions if you'd like.
Couple questions. I didn't see the number for Parker. What was meant at Parker? Did it flash up and I just missed it?
Yes, I'll back up a second, see if I can get to it. Wait, I should get it right there.
And Rebecca Turner, by the way.
Want to get that for you later? Mr. Mitchell?
We can't show it here?
Well, I guess I can back up here.
Can do and make a decision at the end of the month.
That's amazing. Thank you, Dr. Smith.
Thank you, thank you, Trustee Mitchell. Trustee Kelly?
The education committee hasn't met. We'll be meeting in about three weeks. I'm a little concerned about the data that was shared with us. I did not understand why it was just across the district and not by grade level. I guess we'll answer that in the education committee. And the science of reading, I love the fact that literature is a dress. But when we have low-performing learners, I'm really concerned about what's being instituted for those particular students. Because if you can read, that's fine. But the science of reading is talking about the acquiring of the knowledge. So I'd like to delve in that a little deeper. I'm also interested in following up on the curriculum for the greenhouses, the science curriculum, and we'll do that in committee also. So I'm just putting it out there because I've been busy, and I haven't been able to send an email. I want you to know I'm still on it. Yes, and I'm relying on the curriculum leads to be part of this and the resources to be set aside from our superintendent. Thank you, that's my.
Thank you so much, Trustee Kelly. Trustee Sanders?
Hi, good evening. Don't have much on the committee. Mr. Campbell said there's going to be a job fair on October 12th at Mount Vernon High School. The CTE department and the HR department, it's going to be from 3 to 6. Want to read something from the Mount Vernon Educational Foundation. They invited the district, especially Dr. Doggett, for hors d'oeuvres Tuesday, October 24th, from 6 to 9. All the board members are welcome to come at the Alternative Medicine Brewing Company, 29 Elm Avenue at Mount Vernon. If you have any questions, Eileen Justino, 914-837-8965. I also wanted to read something from a community member. Very good news about the Bronx Swim. It's an organization dedicated to teaching young people how to swim. Their classes are at Mount Vernon High School Monday, Wednesday, and Saturday. No CP time, they're on time. If I had to grade them, I'd give them an A+. The instructors seem very friendly to parents and students, always positive. Just be prepared to have fun learning to swim, the Bronx Swim. Keep it up, Mount Vernon. Thank you. This is from Mr. Tetley, Kenneth Tetley. And Mr. Trustee Mitchell, Mitchell, yeah. When I was on the wellness committee a few years ago, we did an assessment of the vending machines in the buildings and to make sure that they're selling healthy snacks. Whose vending machines they are? And if they are handled by the Mount Vernon School District, the treasurers of that school, who's getting that money? So you may want to look into that. Okay? That's all I have.
Trustee Jenga?
Okay, good evening. Last night, President Kerwin, myself, Dr. Gavitan, and our in-house attorney, Russell, we were discussing policies. I'm on the policy committee. We're working on, right now, a few policies. One, the amnization for students. The other is ethics for staff, district dress code, et cetera. Sexual harassment in the district for children, employment, employees, and such. We're also working on student attendance. Our goal is by January 2024 to revamp and reveal our new board docs so it's easier for the public to navigate. And that's pretty much it.
Thank you, Trustee Jenga. Trustee Middleton?
Just want to say hello to everybody tonight. I want to say that I'm very pleased. I don't have any real committee reports because we haven't really had any meetings. But I am very pleased with Rebecca Turner, which is one of my schools that I'm assigned to. And it was great to go in and to really kind of have conversation with the students and the principal, and Mr. Byrdson, and Mr. Muhammad, and just to see that the enrollment has increased. And for what my ears have heard and my eyes have seen, I want to say kudos to them. And I'm sure that as the year goes on, it will get better. I do want to make mention of the fact that on August 26th, to my colleagues, just to say that we went to an amazing professional development workshop in Tarrytown, if I'm correct. And it was amazing. And I pray that what we did learn and take or get while we were there, that we take it now and implement it because I have not seen it. But I hope and pray that it does happen. I want to say that last weekend, the 22nd and 23rd, as a first-year trustee, I had the opportunity to go to Melville, New York, and the school board training was highly informative. And I've learned what I did not know. And I have in my heart what I long to see that we will become better than not. So that's my report for tonight. And it is my prayer that we do this year better than the previous years.
Thank you, Trustee Middleton. Trustee Gail?
Yes, hi, good evening, everybody. On the family committee, we had a meeting last week, which I missed. So I don't have much to talk about today about that. I'll follow up with Dr. Jones on that. I did go to the Grimes School, spoke to the principal, met with him and the PTA president. And we'll be looking to start a mentoring group with some of the children in the school. So it was just one short meeting, introductory meeting. And going forward, we'll be looking to see how we can get to, get some of these children some mentors, real mentors. And we need that in the district. Finally, also, with the wellness challenge, I guess Dr. Doggett and President Kerwin can talk about that a little bit more. We had the first, what's it called? We have the first thing today. And I had some pictures sent from some parents whose children were very excited to be walking to school with their grandparents and parents. So that's a good start, and we'll keep you guys updated with that. As far as the budget, I'll leave that to President Kerwin. Thank you.
Thank you so much, thank you so much. So on the heel of the activity that the Health and Fitness Challenge Committee did today, we rolled out our international walk and roll where parents got a chance to walk their students to school instead of driving. And so if parents, parents in the audience, if you did that today, thank you so much for your participation in our first activity on the committee. Our next activity will be October 11th. We will have a Zumba class at the high school. And we are inviting all parents, all staff. When I say all, first come, first served because it's only 150 seats that we have available. This is going to be at 6:30 PM at the high school. Right, Dr. Doggett? Yes. So that is our next activity for our Health and Fitness Challenge. And so first come, first served. There are going to be a QR code that's going to be sent out with your students on the flyer. So I encourage you to please register for that class. Dr. Doggett, do you want to mention anything else? Okay.
That's next Wednesday, right?
That's next Wednesday.
Where in the high school?
The gym, it will be in the gym. Yes. Dr. Doggett?
No, I would just like to say, I want to thank the director of PE for putting this together for us. And she's going to sponsor the first event, so let's give her a round of applause for that. Ms. Lisa Mazan?
Thank you so much, thank you so much. We are well on our way. And I can't wait for the big loser challenge that's coming up. Okay, as far as the budget committee, the budget committee met a couple weeks ago. And we discussed the tax money that's owed to us, sound like a broken record, by the city. We met with the city, or we spoke to the comptroller. And they sent an agreement with payment that they're going to be paying every month. It's not executed yet, so I don't want to really discuss it any further or going to, you know, communicate the amount that they agreed to pay to the school district because we have not come to an agreement yet. It's not executed yet. Also, we discuss, we have a new external auditing company that started, they should have started in June. They just recently started. They're coming in, I think, this week or next week. Next week. They will be on the ground next week with, working with Mr. Silver and his office closely. And we are praying because we have, if you want to know, we have an educational obligation. We have to file our report to the state by October 15th. We have a grace period for November 15th. And after that, it will be late. And there are consequences if we pay it late. Oh, not pay it late, if we submit it late. State aid will be withheld from the school district. And of course, we cannot afford for state aid to be withheld. We need every dime, every penny that we could get. So, Mr. Silver, we'll be working with the external auditors when they come in next week. They will be on the ground working. We also discussed grant money. As I said previously on one of my reports, that the committee will be now monitoring all the grants that the school district is applying for. We need to know what the grants are earmarked for and the expiration date so we don't lose any money, so we don't have to send any money back to the state. So the committee will be doing that going forward. We also spoke about additional spending for after-school programs. We'll be discussing that further. And we will be having, which is on the agenda tonight, the comprehensive long-range planning analyst study that will be conducted by both seats. So we will be seeing, we will be talking about the enrollment, projections, and all the buildings that are going up in the city just to see where we are and the status of our schools and our school buildings. And I think that's all I have. Nonetheless, Mr. Silver, if you want to add anything that I might miss? Okay. Trustee Kelly, did I miss anything? No. Trustee Gail? No? Okay. Thank you so much. And that's it for all our committee reports. Thank you, everyone.
Do we have any old business?
Go into resolutions. Have a motion for 5.1, Human Resources 91A, certified?
Motion.
Second. Questions, concerns, discussions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Stain? Motion carries. Have a motion for 5.2, Human Resources 91B, classified?
Motion. I have a question.
Questions, concerns, discussions?
Yeah, first, thank you for the backup. Much appreciated. I'm not sure who this question goes to. I don't know if this is Mr. Campbell. With respect to our school safety officers, or I'm sorry, school monitors and how they're hired, how does that go as far as? For instance, we had a different company in here last year that provided the service. We had, you know, we had internal folks that were already here. When those jobs and positions became available, did our internal, wouldn't our internal people have had precedence or preference over the outside company for being hired? Is that how that go, what is the process?
But I would say that the majority of the people that were hired were from Brigger. The ones that were already here, they were already hired as probationary employees or permanent employees. It was either they were from Brigger or they were per diem employees. So we took everybody.
And those people that were per diem flipped over to perm?
Correct.
And how was the step that those folks were brought in that determined? So let's say, for instance, okay, I got the same experience. I worked for Brigger, but I have the same experience as somebody that's a per diem. How does it, how was the step determinist for? Can you explain what the step is? Because not everybody understands it.
So the steps for security, there's 10 steps, of course, from 1 to 10. And it was just based on experience. So step being the highest, step 10 being the highest step that you could be on. Even if you had, if you were outside security personnel for wherever you worked from before, we just determined it based on how, what their security level was within a school situation. So some people, if they were at a step 1, that meant that they never worked in a school environment before. So if they had, say, two or three years of experience, depending on what it was, then I would determine what step I would put them at.
So basically, somebody who's been in the district already for at least a year, opposed to somebody who did not have any experience, that person would probably come into step 2.
Correct.
The other person would come into step 1.
Correct.
Okay, I'm just trying to get an understanding as to how we make that decision. Thank you.
I have a question. Mr. Noel? Something was, it was raised tonight that security were guards and now they're monitors. Like, what happened? What was the change?
Yeah, there's no difference between that.
Okay.
Yeah.
I just wanted clarification.
Because it's just language, like, I'd still mess it up. I call them security guards or monitors, but there's no difference between the terminology.
So when it comes to the salaries, does it make a difference on? So when it comes to the salaries, does it make a difference on where they're at? Is there a tier? Is there something? How does that work?
No, it's, it's just steps. I know, as it was mentioned, that the salary is low, but that's based on what the contract and where it is at this current time. So there's nothing I could personally do about it. We do just take into account, like, what their level of experience is, where we make the determination of what step we're going to put them at.
Right. So how much longer is our contract? So how much longer will they be paid at $29,000 before there's a renegotiation?
So we're currently in negotiations now, so, and this is actually will be my first time going through this whole process. I'm hoping it's something that we can get by the end of the school year, but this, these salaries, as is with the teacher salaries, this is all under the old contract, which expired, I think that was 2022.
Okay. Thank you.
No problem.
So just to be clear, the, the security monitors are under the same bargaining unit as the teachers' contract?
Correct.
That's what I think you don't, people need to understand, it's under the same bargaining unit, so.
Oh, it's under the same bargaining?
When the teachers and TAs get their contracts signed, it will be the monitors as well.
So, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Motion carries. Have a motion for 5.3, approval to establish temporary September 1, 2023 through June 30, 2024, pay for certified and uncertified substitute teachers. Questions, concerns, discussions?
Can you explain this, Dr. Kip?
That's the substitute teachers listing. Basically, we wanted to establish the pay for especially seasoned teachers who retired. They will receive the $279 per day.
Is that, I'm sorry, is that, that's retroactive all the way, how does it work?
No, it's not. It's based on, it's a per diem salary.
Okay.
So based on the days they work.
Okay, I'm sorry, because I was a little confused, thank you.
You're welcome.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Have a motion for 5.4, approval to establish a title Creative Executive Director. I need a second. Who's that? Questions, concerns, discussions?
Questions. We're establishing this title, did it not already exist in our district?
No, it did not.
Ever?
That title never existed.
When they established the Performing Arts, what was the person who ran that program initially at Malverna High School?
There was the Director of the Arts. It included CTE and Gifted Intelligence.
And what's the difference between this title and that one?
Significant District, significant, this title will look at a district required perspective in which they scour the district in terms of K to 8. It won't just be at the high school, it'll be from K, even as low as pre-K. It'll also look in terms of performances, assistive performances at every building. It looks at the curriculum for the arts. So it, it will be really focused on, you know, performances throughout the district.
Thank you.
Entire district, yes.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Motion carries. Have a motion for 5.5, approval to establish the title Director of Special Education Compliance. Motion. Questions, concerns, discussions?
Certainly can. The district was in a lawsuit. You might have heard the name Julie Elliott is one of the monitors. So in about 2013, we, we had a case, which continues today in the federal government. We had, basically, some families said, we want, we want our children to receive services, special ed services. And so their fight was for that, to ensure that their students receive adequate special ed services. So they weren't really fighting for any financial reward, they wanted to make sure that we improved in this area. So basically, what happened, there was someone, Julie Elliott, was assigned to the district, she, there was movement in terms of coming into compliance in all of the areas. So right before COVID, things slowed down. There's been several changes in administration, and we have not made progress. And so what they're basically saying, if we don't make the progress, then we could be faced with paying millions of dollars.
Okay. I have a question. Can the board meet Judy Elliott before we establish this title? I would like the board members to meet, have a meeting with Judy Elliott before this title is established. In other words, because I want to understand if there's redundancy in the system, I want to understand, how long has this woman been observing this district, and what improvements have been made post and previous to COVID? I'd like more information on this title that's being set up. It is another administrative position being established. I would like clarity before we put it on.
Okay, so I, I just wanted to intervene, and you could pull the tab if you like. We had a litigations meeting where lawyer basically said what we had to do, we need to do, so we could have the meeting, but we also have lawyers waiting to see what we're going to do, and they're getting ready to go to court. And that was discussed when the lawyers met with everyone and had this conversation.
I think I, I had said in that meeting that the board needed to talk to Judy Elliott. I wanted to understand what her findings were, where the shortcomings were in the district.
So we have, we have Stephanie and Gus here. Is there any consequences we will face as a district if we pull this and don't establish this position? Because I know, okay, okay, so we pull it and I guess we discuss it as far as the consequences.
I'm more interested in the results of what's going on in the district right now than the consequences. I think, are we not paying this person who's?
Well, there's lawsuits that's surrounding this.
Right, but we pay her, right? Is Judy Elliott paid by the district?
I don't think so.
You don't pay her?
Yes, we do.
We do pay our?
So I, I think we should just pull it and go into executive session for clarity, I don't want to create a controversy. I just want clarity on this particular title. We might, I may probably vote for it, but I'd like some clarity on what's going on with the special education.
Okay, please, please pull it.
Have a motion to pull 5.5, approval to establish a title Director of Special Education and Compliance.
Motion.
Second.
So we, we pull that?
Yep.
Because it was discussed previously.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain?
Can I ask, can I just ask one question? So basically, this title seems like it's reactive, the, the point of us establishing is reactive? But if not, fine, but why wouldn't compliance fall underneath the Director of Special Education? Is that something conflicting?
Did you want to discuss this now or in executive session?
Okay, there's, all right, fine, that sounds fine, we can discuss it then.
Have a motion for 5.6, authorization to appoint Jose Formosa as the School District Treasurer.
Motion.
Questions, concerns, discussions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Abstain? Motion carries. Have a motion for 6.1, authorization to hire additional staff for the Literacy Planning Committee during the 2023-2024 school year.
Motion.
Questions, concerns, discussions?
Is this, would this, is this covered by the normal school budget? Is this covered in any other fashion? Like, is it by grants? Where is the money coming from?
This is right here.
Grants.
Some grants.
Grants.
Thank you. We have grants that are covering these, these, for these folks to be paid, yes?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
I hear literacy. Literacy. This is for each building, you're hiring additional?
This is for the district by plan.
For the, the plan, which will include what? Because I see literacy.
This is the same presentation, this is from the presentation that we just did, and this is from the resolution that we did, that you previously passed a couple weeks ago. It's just additional members to complete the work for the actual rollout of the units of study. I did, they were not needed in the beginning for the summer planning, because I wanted to save, make sure we save money, that it actually needed now to complete this work, because we want to make sure we have enough teachers per grade level to complete these units of study.
Okay.
And we have an additional, we have additional members that were hired this year that have skills, specific, skill sets specifically in the science of reading, that's going to help with those lessons and create the common assessments.
So we'll have reading teachers involved? I thought this was, I was looking at the personnel, I wasn't sure who was part of the committee. So are they teachers or administrators?
They're, they're teachers, there's three administrators, four administrators, and the rest are teachers. We still, we asked for eight additional teachers, currently we only have four, because we're just not putting anybody on the team. So we're still advertising, as you can see on the, on the resolution, it says four to be determined. So we're still looking for more, which can be reading specialists, but we're looking for people with specific skill set that are willing to do the work.
I appreciate the information, thank you.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Motion carries. Have a motion for 6.2, authorization to update staff for the 2023-2024 MTSS?
Motion.
School teams at all K to 8 schools?
Motion.
Okay, neither, I think you, but wait for the question.
Yes, I have a question for myself, I'm just joking. I just wanted to bring something, attention to the board. This MTSS committee is actually RTI and PBIS combined. We had our first meeting with the school teams last Thursday. We have a lot of new administrators, we have specific schools with new administrative teams. They didn't realize that the MTSS was combined RTI and PBIS. So as a result, there may be additional, an additional revision to this, based on those principals, didn't realize the people in their buildings, because they didn't know them. So now that they know them, there may be another revision to this. It will not exceed the amount of teachers per building, but just please note, there may be another revision to this. I know we don't like doing this, but we still have some vacancies in here, and we have some people in the building who have specific skill set that are not on this team. They did not know that until they came to the first meeting.
So, I'm sorry, did you say that principals do not know that these teachers exist in their buildings?
No, what I want to say is, if you are a PBIS team member, and you're a new principal, you come to the building, you don't know that someone's a PBIS member. If that member doesn't know that this team, which is the MTSS team, is RTI and PBIS combined. So once we had the meeting, they realized, they said, oh, we didn't know that. So I have PBIS people in my building, can we put them on the team if we have enough slots? So this may come back again at the next board meeting with revisions, because those principals did not know.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Motion carries. Have a motion for 6.3, approval for cheerleading team to travel to Trenton, New Jersey to compete in the regional competition.
Motion.
Questions, concerns, discussions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Motion carries. Have a motion for 7.1, authorization to pay parent liaisons for up to 24 days of summer work for 2023?
Motion.
Questions, concerns, discussions?
And I think the summer for 2023 has passed us, even though it was hot today, but are you saying that we didn't pay the parent liaisons for half the summer?
In one of our executive session, we had a conversation to go ahead and pay them before we established this. At that particular time, we, we brought forth their contract for the school year, but not for the summer.
Thank you.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Motion carries. Have a motion for 7.2, authorization to approve to continue the district's Title 1 school-wide committees for 2023-2024. Questions, concerns, discussions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Motion carries. Have a motion for 7.3, authorization to update dispersed stipends to providing program services for the operating, operating of the Purchase College slash Great Potential Program at the Denzel Washington School of the Arts, Mount Vernon Steam Academy, and Lincoln School. Questions, concerns, discussions?
Really quick, is this, is this, this is an update from original stipends that were in place, correct?
It's, it's one person, that is, it's read as it should read.
Okay, so, so in this, in the 23-24 budget already that we were going to put out these stipends, will that budget account for this?
Yes.
Update? Okay. I just want to, I was.
To grant.
Okay, even better, thank you.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Motion carries. Have a motion for 8.1, approval of student services, pupil personnel services memorandum number 5 dated October 4, 2023. Give a second. Questions, concerns, discussions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Motion carries. Have a motion for 9.1, authorization to pay staff at district-wide bus monitors? Questions, concerns, discussions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Motion carries. Have a motion for 9.2, approval to rescind Resolution 9.4 dated May 16, 2023, American Petroleum, Inc., to remove abandoned district oil tanks.
Question.
Questions, concerns, discussions?
Can we just have a simple understanding as to why we're rescinding this?
Good evening. So back in May, the board authorized American Petroleum to perform this service, and in the last board meeting, we authorized Northeast Environmental to perform the same service at a significant cost savings. So we wanted to officially cancel their authorization out and move forward with the new one that we did at the last meeting.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Motion carries. Have a motion for 10.1, approval of the June 2023 Treasury Report.
Motion.
Good evening again. This is monthly report done by the Treasurer's Office, which just lists all the expenses and revenue for, for the month. So this is available, if you'd like to see all the months, I'd be more than happy to explain all of this separately, if that would help, but it's pro forma, pro forma, put out by the Treasurer's Office.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Motion carries. Have a motion for 10.2, approved approved general funds transfers 2023-2024 for October 4, 2023.
Second.
Need a second? Questions, concerns, discussions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Motion carries. Have a motion for 10.3, authorization for a comprehensive long-range planning analysis study to be conducted by BOSIS.
Motion. Second.
Questions, concerns, discussions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Motion carries. Have a motion for 11.1, authorization to renew a contract for Sasha Gay-Harris as athletic trainer.
Second.
Questions, concerns, discussions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Motion carries. Have a motion for 12.1, authorization to revise Policy Number 7511, immunization of students.
Motion. Second.
Questions, concerns, discussions?
I have a question. Dr. Gavitt?
Oh. So, there's been a great deal of changes made to immunization law. New York State no longer recognize religious exemptions. And we've noticed we have a rise of parents who are not immunized. Their children are getting vaccinated, and they expect for us to not follow the law and register them. So, we made sure we update. The last update was in 2006. So, we make sure to comply to the law. The only exemption that is accepted is a medical exemption. So, all children in New York State must be immunized unless they have a doctor's letter stating why. So, we felt that because of the whys that we were seeing in registration, that we needed to update this.
Is that it? Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Motion carries. Have a motion for 13.1, motion to enter into executive session for the purpose of discussing pending litigation, the financial history of a particular person or corporation or matters leading to the appointment, employment, demotion, discipline, suspension, dismissal, or removal of a particular person or corporation, and to receive legal advice on a pending matter. Any motion?
Second.
First?
First.
Second.
First and second.
Okay. Questions, concerns, discussions? Right?
How long are we coming back?
Yes.
How long?
Are you coming back?
Yeah. No, how are we going to pull to me? Who's coming back?
Do we have to do it tonight?
Okay. So, not coming back from executive. Okay. Thank you so much. Thank you for staying with us. And have a great night, and we see you at the next board meeting. Have a good night. Thank you.